All right, Bannock County Commissioners are back in session. Mia, would you introduce yourself and tell us what you're here for?
Mia Kate Kennedy the first, CEO of Bannock Development Corporation. So I have an ask and I have something to say. The first thing that I have to say is, so as if I didn't have enough to do in my daily work of about 80 hours a week, I am studying quantum physics. And I'm almost to the end of quantum physics and I have actually aced almost all of the classes, so that's cool that I understand it. But one of the things I learned in quantum physics that will apply to this is two words. One, possibilities, and two, collaboration. So if you study quantum physics, you realize that even if you make big errors, those errors lead others to find the solutions. And collaboration is that we need to work together to be able to find those solutions. So when I'm doing economic development, those two words seem to always apply because we're always better together than independently. And when I first got here, there was an initiative to change Bannock Development in their marketing plan to market Bannock Development Corporation. But after a couple of weeks of talking with Commissioner Huff, I was like, you could call us ABZ Corporation, and unless we're doing our job correctly, it's not going to matter. But what is going to matter is how other people in other cities look at us, and recruiters look at us, and site selectors look at us, and businesses look at us, because that's our job to bring those in. And so just this last year, I kept hearing from the city of Pocatello and Chubak and different cities and different areas and the county, and even different counties, because obviously the airport's one of our projects, and that's Power County. And in doing that, we decided that it was probably best, what I thought would be best, is instead of all of us marketing just ourselves, we should be marketing together and create a pro forma. And what really led me to put this on the project folder for this year is I went back east and attended the International Women's Conference on Economic Development. And that's a huge, really highly coveted conference, and there's only 100 people that get to attend, and I was able to go. And there, I talked to a number of site selectors, about five that would do our area, and they actually sat down with me for free and said, these are some of the things that you should be looking at in order to market your economic development. And these are all things that I've thought about, but we just can't pull the trigger on. So I approached the board and Commissioner Huff, and I said, why would we spend $58,000 at the minimum for each individual rebranding, and this branding, and this marketing, when we could work together for our area? So we got a number of people together. Commissioner Huff did his homework a lot last year, and decided that if we did hire someone, we would hire them collectively. We would take in the money at Bannock Development, and because we have a low overhead and we're public-private, we could hire the consultant as the client, and we would do that marketing pro forma based on all of our assets. And I call them assets because we have so many. We sometimes forget that. And then we could market them together. Then I can take that pro forma out when I'm out there and say, this is what we are about. These are the different things. And just like a photograph of a group of people, you always look at that group of people, but then you're like, well, there am I, and there's this person, and there's this person. That's what people do. And that's what that pro forma would do. So currently, we have collected $25,000 in, from this group, and our total is up to 140 for this project that will take many, many months, but it'll be done by the end of the year. Probably no later than the middle or end of September, actually. And so we're asking you for, to put in for the county, $20,000 to this collaborative pot, if you will, to do the branding and marketing and pro forma for me to recruit businesses. And we still have others putting in. It's just, this is just the beginning, so that's what we've collected so far. We just did this, started this two weeks ago. But we would like to get going on it, and Bannock Development would start it, and then we would pay the bills as they come in.
Questions?
Well, I guess I'd need to see a lot more information about Bannock Development. What exactly you do, what precisely you're proposing to be done. Do you have, I'm sure you have brochures and information sheets. I'd like to see those.
Yeah, sure. So Bannock Development is the economic development arm of Pocatello, Chubak, and Bannock County. So we're the quasi-government, and we're only about one in six in the nation that have that availability to be more independent and pull the trigger on things faster, so.
And we already put 70,000?
That's correct.
70,000 into Bannock Development right now.
Yes. So you're, what you donate to us is used for several different projects, and currently some of our projects are very, very big. We're working on doing the economic development for the airport, North Gate, helping downtown, South County, and several other projects. So probably for you, Commissioner Crowder, it might be nice if you come in and we could spend some time together, you and I, and you could see what we do. I know I've spent a lot of time with Ernie and Commissioner Huff, and Commissioner Huff sits on our board, so I'd be glad to do that, and you can see the insides of what some of those projects look like.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, it's exciting. So there you have it, unless you have any other questions. And like I said, that rebranding does look at all the assets. They do all the interviewing. They interview retail, they interview the school, they interview any of the areas that they feel like would make this marketing pro forma something that a site selector or any business would look at and be able to see. These are your assets, this is what you've got going on, this is where we can go to these links, which will all be linked to the counties, the cities. And each city's available to do their own branding as well, but just like I said, a picture, then they would be picked out by those site selectors for specifics. So it's a really big tool for me that we don't have compared to everyone else at the conference. And it's something we haven't had, and it's just a really good opportunity for us to be able to bring business in.
And this is something I've been looking at for about a year, this place branding, and we've been down to Logan and Twilla, a couple other places, those two in particular, and looked at what they've done with this and where they've taken their communities based on this place branding. And it is something that I feel as a whole that would be good for us to market Bannock County as a whole, and not just Pocatello or Chubak. And as we were down in South County last night, this is one of those things that could help market South County and the assets they have, so that's why I invited Mia Kate to come here and make the ask, so.
Yeah, I also think if you keep in mind that it's not just a big marketing fancy picturesque thing, it's really about community service, what our people here are made of, what our businesses are made of, what our history is. So it's volumes of information that they can take that we have culminated as a community, so to speak, because I think all of those elements are super important, and I realize how valuable the dollar is, so.
That's something that we'll visit about. This is a, not a meeting that we're gonna make a decision on.
Okay.
For that, at this time, but with a little more information, then we'll do it in our regular business meetings.
And I can send over what the proposal looks like, and then Commissioner Crowder, if you want to get together, by all means, let's make an appointment, I won't do it.
Oh, yeah, as you're going downstairs, if you don't mind checking in with Kristy Davenport.
Yeah.
She should have my calendar, and maybe we can set up a time.
Yeah, that'd be great. That'd be great. I think it'd be really helpful, so.
All right.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
All right. All right, cemetery. Thank you. Been nice to see the decorations have all changed a little bit. Please introduce yourselves.
My name is Lauren Nielsen, as most of you should know, and I am the chairman of the cemetery board for the Emerald Cemetery District, and Doug.
Doug Armstrong.
I'm Steve Christensen from Emerald.
He's over the Emerald Cemetery, he's over the Robin Cemetery, and I've got the Marsh Center. We're just a small cemetery district that's having small problems being a government agency, and we'd just like to mostly get some advice on certain things, and we'll go from there.
Okay.
The first thing, I'll just go down what the agenda was, they're not necessarily in order, it's just what our secretary put down. First thing is that our county records need to be updated as far as the cemetery district is concerned. I'll have Doug and Steve probably go in a little more detail, but we've got, as you look on the records, the LDS church owns the property for Emerald Cemetery. His boundaries are being used by somebody else, but Doug, do you wanna?
Yeah. Just to give you a little bit of background information, as we started looking at some of the issues, and they may not be current, it may be stuff that just needs to be updated on the records, but the question really comes down to, number one, does the land that we're dealing with belong to the cemetery districts, or does it belong to Bannock County? And when you look on the plat maps, like I said, one of them says the church still owns it, one of them says that it still belongs to the Patsy Thacker estate out in Robin. She donated six acres of ground, and there's only four and a half acres that are fenced in at the moment. Back in 2008, 2009, a student at ISU started to do a plat of the Robin Cemetery. And she was assisted by Tim Shirtliff, who used to work for the county, used to do some surveying and some other stuff, as well as planning stuff for the county. When they went out to the Robin Cemetery, they found that our corner posts were in the wrong place, there's another acre and a half of ground that belongs to the cemetery. And once again, none of those, none of those markers have been put in place, and I guess the question is, if it's cemetery district land, then are we responsible for getting that taken care of, or is it Bannock County land ultimately that would help us get that other acre and a half of property fenced in? And the current family that owns it would of course have to sign, sign that over when we went through all the details. The resident that used to live there was elderly, and it was not the appropriate time to ever talk to him, but when Tim was employed by the county, those were some of the things that we were working on, looking at doing. But there's just some questions, you know, it's like the Emerald Cemetery, they only have a few more grave spots available. And so if we're looking at buying a piece of property, once again, is it cemetery district's responsibility to buy an open lot somewhere in Emerald, or is it the county's responsibility to keep some of these properties going? And I think if you go around the entire South County, you're gonna run into some of these same issues as far as the growth and where things should go. They did a cemetery plat, it was never formally adopted or approved. I got the maps that they did, they completed a map in 2010, I got it handed over to me in 2017, or maybe 18. And I've been trying to go off that map, but once again, there's no official corner posts put in, so it's really hard to get your bearings for the measurements of where things should be. I can see what she kind of had in mind, but once again, you have to leave room for roads and all of the other stuff for future growth, and we just find ourselves beating our head up against the wall. You know, if we've gotta go sign over a piece of property, even though it's an acre and a half, is that something that somebody from the county or who represents the county should go and do, or is that something that is expected of us?
You want the simple answer?
Yeah.
I don't know if lawyer can ever get a simple answer. There's, so it's, the first question, we're gonna have to determine what the district boundaries are, right? Because in my opinion, looking at state code, as soon as we create those boundaries and we go through that whole process and the hearing and the whole rigmarole, that, the title of that land actually vests in the district, and then you guys kinda run, now the, kinda run the show where it comes to the land even selling and conveying and everything of that nature. So the county's out of it at that point.
You actually hold title?
Yeah.
To the cemetery, as a cemetery board?
Okay.
You own it.
So we're responsible for everything that takes place in there?
Correct.
Well, that's where we start to run into problems, because in a small cemetery district, we don't have the funding to be able to do a tenth of the things that need to be done in order to make this a viable operating system. You know, we can't get people, Mr. Christensen's been trying to turn over the Emerald Cemetery to people for two years, we can't get people to do it. Or if they're gonna do it, they'll come for maybe a month and then say, that's too much work for the, you know, the $400 they get paid. And, you know, it just, it becomes problematic in, in surveying the ground and doing all of the other stuff. By the time we pay the surveyor and the other stuff that we need to have done, if we have a pump go out, there goes our water for the summer. And we wanna see some angry people on the cemetery coming over there, don't water the grass.
Believe me, we get the same calls. We have zero authority.
But see, once again, you've had some of those same calls that have dealt with complaints, and I know the commissioners in the past have driven down and looked at the cemeteries, and so that creates confusion, because if you're gonna go and survey the work that we're doing, but you have no authority to oversee it, then that complaint should be forwarded to us so that we can deal with the family that's making the complaint.
It was, because they got hold of you. That's how you knew. That's how you knew that we'd come down there.
We're talking about one situation out of many.
Yeah, well, that's the one that I know of.
Well.
And that was submitted back to you. But as I talked to Brian, and we went through the statutes and stuff, once you create the boundaries of your cemetery district, you have levy, levying rights, it's all up to you as a board. Once that board's created, you are the, you're the owners, you're responsible for it, it's your, your baby.
With that being said, we do have a problem, because we can't seem to get anybody to, and passing a bond out there just isn't gonna happen.
That's true.
You know how that goes.
Yeah.
And what happens if they don't run again?
It's not what happens. I'm quitting in December, if nobody takes over, what's gonna happen to the cemetery?
What are some of our options? Is that just up to us to figure that out?
But that's up to you. As we read through straight statute, that's, that's up to you, because you become the elected board over that cemetery, that district.
See, my, my commission ends in December, so I'm done, I don't have nothing to do with it. So I just walk away, leave the cemetery?
You know, these are some of the things that we can see coming up, and I know if they're not satisfied with us, they'll give you a call, and so we're, we're taking our little time as we got here.
Well, and that, that's fine, but when I got your letter, I went to Brian, showed him the letter, says, okay, what's our ultimate responsibilities, and, and basically it's turned over to the cemetery boardage, you're elected.
It's true. So that kind of answers the rest of the, some of the kind of stuff, other than the, some of the property lines. Well, let's just go on to, let's go on to the road going into Robin, do you wanna go with that?
Yeah, we can talk about that.
Go ahead.
One of the concerns I had out to Robin, and it's one of the few cemeteries that are in the South County that don't access a formal road. It's a, I'm sure the county has an easement up through there, Road and Bridge has been down, it's been named Cemetery Road, it's been named Road W, but winters like this winter that we've just had create a problem when people wanna go to their graves and visit their, their family members. We're more than a half mile from the roads, and once again, we're talking about a lot of snow removal. We had, we had three funerals in three days this winter, that was three days of snow removal, just because the wind and the snow that comes in, that breaks our budget, you know? And I'm, this is nothing against the county or anything else, but I've been told different things at different times. Mr. Aller years ago would come out and the, the road up past that house and up to the cemetery gate would always be cleaned out. Or if we knew we had something coming up, we could call and have that done, at least get us to the cemetery. Worst case scenario, if they had to walk from the gate to a plot, you know, we could make that happen, but then it became a no, we can't do anything, because it's not part of the county, but yet we still have county road signs that are coming in there.
I think that was culpable in the.
And, you know, I, I visited a little bit with Mr. Vermester, you know, there's not an easy answer. And ultimately, we're talking about, you know, making a trip up there once a month, if possible, to, to clear that snow out so family members can get in there. But for me to do it, once again, that's, that's thousands of dollars of money that we don't have to be able to even employ people to take care of the district. Most of the cemeteries, Emerald, Marsh Center, you know, McCammon, most of those places, they either have their own plow, or they have the ability to just park on the road and they walk in. A little bit problematic when you get the income getting up the hill and doing stuff, but.
The Sexton's one that plows it. It's not the county, not the city.
Good.
Any come I know of. I'm not sure with McCammon, because you got.
Well, we're talking about a county road, that's not, that's not.
Are we? Kyle, come on up here.
That's what we need to find out.
Kyle, come on up here.
It's not our property.
Kyle's in our.
We like Kyle.
In our audience, so let's just talk to him.
We like all of you, I didn't mean that to come across.
I'd like to say, when we went down there and looked, there's a house right in there on that road.
Correct.
With farm equipment that hasn't been moved for quite a while on both sides of the road.
That's been cleaned up, hasn't it?
A lot of that's been cleaned up.
Has it, well, this, when I was down there two years ago.
Well, he passed away, and then the family is.
But, anyway, so it didn't look like a county road to me when we went there. Kyle?
It's a private road, but it is true that the county has one in there years back.
Who owns the road?
As far as we have on ours, it's, it's private, so it's the owner of them fields right there. There's gotta be some easement, you would think, to that cemetery.
And who has the easement? The county or the?
No, no.
Syndicate?
The county does not have any easement to there.
I don't know if we do either.
I mean, in the past, there's been times where they might have helped out in cases and did things like that. I just, I went to what, the county roads, and we only maintained whatever's in the county road system, so.
And this was a good winter, no doubt about it.
Amen. Well, we're, we're looking, this is what we came to find out, the property lines, I think that, doesn't the county keep records of those? Where would we?
They should be, they should be plotted, but if they weren't updated, I don't know.
Yeah, and that's probably the case.
Every time something's surveyed, it should be updated, but if nobody submitted that information, then.
I would start with planning and development, and they can get, they got more than I have, and then they can get you in touch with, they know the right department to go to for what you need.
Anita can help you too. Because Anita, with Assessor, she can help you too, because she'll have your district boundaries, hopefully. Well, I know she has those, but as far as more detail.
All right. But on a map, it's easy to have it, like say, where is it when you want, get out there, and where's the corner post, and have they been put in the right places?
That's what we're afraid, it hasn't necessarily been done, so.
Yeah.
Come on, I get excited.
You're familiar to that, aren't you? Both of you.
Well, I.
Yeah, and I, and I can also check into it more too. That's, that's where I was at, is there were some things that we were doing that, whether it was in city limits, or roads that weren't county, that I just corrected that we're in.
Well, you're familiar with the road, so it's a.
Yeah, and like I said, I've worked there for a while, and I know that we've bladed it before.
Well, Kyle, it, it becomes confusing. I mean, I'm not an expert on Bannock County property and where things should be, but ultimately, at one time, we cleared the road, then we don't, then we might, then, I don't know, we'll have to see.
Well, that's true.
But it's the same with surveying it. If a county employee's down there surveying it on county time, and now you're.
That's illegal. That's illegal.
A county employee's surveying it? Surveying what?
The property lines of the whole cemetery.
A county person is?
Did.
When was that?
Not a while ago.
Oh, I don't know anything about that.
Seven years ago, probably.
Well, when I came into, to my office, it's, we've kind of made policies where we didn't have before and got some road standards, and we've made sure in the database, through the state and everything, we don't get no funds for this, this is on the county road. If they were doing it before me, they were doing it for free, so.
And, you know, there's nine elected officials in Bannock County, and every department changes a little bit every time there's an election.
It's, we appreciate the opportunity to meet, it's just frustrating, I don't think we're the only ones. We're not gonna get bonds. Yeah, I could, I could put that out, we're not gonna get bonds, especially that area. Mostly rural, they don't pass bonds, they don't vote for them, the school district had issues, it's, it's just tough way to get, because most of them are agricultural land, it's not a big populated area.
Yeah.
When we put $400, that's only six months of 400, really is $200 for the year, because we're still on. So it's not like we're making money on this, it's more because all of us have families in those cemeteries, and so we kinda take care of them. So if any other advice you can give us, we'd appreciate it, other than that, I think we're.
Well, I think that you need to sit down as a board, come up with a game plan, and then we can help you advertise, or help, you know, in ways that we can, to expend county funds for certain cemetery districts, it's just like our fire districts, our cemetery districts, school districts, each one has their ability to levy, and, and that becomes a responsibility of the board, that we have zero say about.
Well, we were also looking just for some expertise. You guys deal with this on a regular basis, we don't.
Yeah, and that's, I'd say, every meeting I go to, it says, turn to your legal, so I went and talked to our legal department, and that's exactly what, what states in statute.
We appreciate your efforts. You gonna be down our way this, tonight?
We was down there last night.
Oh, it was last night?
We was in Emerald last night.
I missed that.
Yeah.
Did it go pretty well?
It wasn't bad, there was 10 people, plus the city council and, and the commission and the elected officials.
Well, appreciate you coming down.
And we're gonna continue to do that, and.
Real quick, one other thing, at, at budget time, you can visit with the auditor here, or the controller, excuse me, and see if there's any room in your levy to potentially raise that a little bit to get more funds.
We've been raising it for 20 years now, and.
A bit three percent.
And we're at $400 a month, can you imagine somebody moving pipes over lawn, besides mowing the lawn and whatnot for 400? I did it because I have family there, but I've been there over 30 years, and I'm done. It's gonna be the end for me.
And what will be, if they don't vote for it, then maybe they won't have water lawns, so I'd say it that way, but we're trying to keep it up.
So this district has all three cemeteries?
Yeah.
Yeah, we each have a cemetery, a, a district, kinda like your elected districts, over the cemetery, there's only one cemetery that we each have. They're small rural cemeteries, you're not gonna make money on the burials. His has been there, they, they're a little more populated than the rest, but he's running out. I've got plenty of room, but it's an old cemetery. I don't know if where I'm digging, I have somebody there or not, nobody's kept records when I took over, so. Those kind of complications that come from dealing with rural stuff. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions or?
Comments?
No, it's a tough spot.
We appreciate, yeah, I hope that, and we appreciate just being able to talk to somebody with some expertise. Christie recommended it, and I'm not blaming it on Christie, she said, why don't you come and get, talk to you guys for, it's all Christie's fault, I, no.
It usually is.
She keeps us going.
But she gets the credit, too.
We appreciate the service. Thank you very much. Sorry I missed that, I thought it was tonight.
No, no, I thought we did that last night. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Dan?
Thanks, Kyle.
Dan Kendall, Facilities Director.
Ashley Ford, Maintenance Technician.
We're just here for the monthly update. As far as general maintenance goes, the weather has been causing some disruptions with some leaky roofs. Thrown Bridge is due for a new roof, Lander's building is due for a new roof. Ag Extension had a flood. They're kind of prone to it, because they're sitting kind of down in a hole from the racetrack, so as the rain and snow.
They didn't get the notice on sandbags?
They missed that.
And that happened before the sandbags, didn't it? It was like right there.
It's prone to that, and they have a, they have a storm drain that got plugged up, and it, so the water came in. So we had a flooding restoration company up there drying things out over a weekend, and the staff up there was a great help, moving their furniture, and they did a great job cleaning up, so we got them put back together. We did some work over at the Annex Building, we changed the way the TV monitors were facing so the public can better utilize those. They used to be kind of shining out the window, and you couldn't read them, so we've turned those and taken some down, and I think they're, I think they're better. We also added some circuits and some floor outlets to try to eliminate some safety hazards they had in there, they had moved their furniture and just strung cords across the floor, so we're going to work towards getting that taken care of. Boiler project, still waiting on some engineering. I, I firmly believe we're on a better path of getting things done. Levi and I will be here next week to present the equipment that they've picked out, and let you guys look at that. Courtroom 218, we're waiting on the finished carpenter to finish staining that wood, so it's worked out really well. While we're waiting for him, we've moved over to the Safe Teen Center, and good news there was we got the building permit last week, and started framing, and it's going really well. I think we'll be done framing next week, and get people in there roughing that in.
When you're over there, would you give me a call, just, I'd like to come over and just walk around.
Yeah, I'd love to have you over, we're kind of lonely over there, don't have any visitors coming and checking it out, it's changed a lot since you've, you've all seen it. It looks really good, I think they did a good job with the design of it, I think all the space is being utilized, you'll be impressed, I think.
I'd like to walk through it.
Yeah. The good news over there, actually with the weather, just watching the snow and the rain, the way the water's coming off that roof, we can see why the water damage has been so bad over there. It just comes down that stucco, all the way around that building. You guys approved some money for the roof, 50,000, and I think the, the bid's going to be a little bit lower than that, so I would propose with the remaining money that we put gutters on that building, to try to get that water away from that stucco, it's amazing the directions that water's going, and it gets in the grooves and the nooks, and it goes all over the place, and.
I believe when we talked about that, we said, take care of the, the needs that are there within the monies that we have, so if we can do that, let's do that.
The roof and the gutters together will be under what you guys approved for the roof, so.
Same project to me.
Yeah. Okay. The other thing is, is we were hoping to borrow the man lift from the generator building, but it, they've had a series of breakdowns up there, so we couldn't use it, so I rented one, so it's going to be a little bit of a cost there for the rental, I, it's $500 a month, so I thought that was a pretty fair number. And then we're not running a man lift back and forth up to the landfill. And then the only other thing that's come up is, it's a 50, 500 square foot building, and they literally have a 12-foot sewer line in that thing, so there's nowhere to tie into that sewer line, so the new design has two new restrooms, the city wants us to use the existing tap on the sewer line, so that means we've got to dig up the alley, which is far better than digging up the whole inside of the building. But it's something we were planning on, so I'm here today to ask for some money on that, ARPA funds to dig 100 feet of the alley up, put in a sewer line in, get into the existing tap, and put the alley back together. That pending dig line doesn't find a whole bunch of stuff underground. So, I would like to ask for 12,000 to 100 feet of digging, put the alley back together, the core drilling through the foundation, and the, the concrete removal that would be involved.
Questions? On that?
Do you have a, how firm is that number?
I think that's padded by about 10%, just in case, so I don't have to keep coming back.
They approve up to 15?
Yes.
Is that what you were thinking?
Yeah.
I'd ask for a motion on that one.
Mr. Chair, make a motion that we approve up to an additional $15,000 for the digging up of the alleyway for the septic system, as requested.
The motion, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Unless Ashley has anything else, I think that's it for her update.
That's it.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Kyle?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Kyle Vermister, Bannock County Public Works.
Dylan Evans, Assistant Operations Manager, Solid Waste.
Aubrey Lewis, Management Assistant, Solid Waste.
Well, we came back in to discuss a little further on our, some of our landfill services we do. Commissioner Huff wasn't present last time, but. To kind of go back through it a little bit, is, kind of start with free days. So, free days, we do six free days a year. Two of them free days are at the Pocatello and McCammon, our landfill locations. One day is in Incom, but they haul their waste, the city hauls it to the Pocatello site, so we just accept it there for free. We have one day at each of the rest of the city's lava, Aramo, and Downey, where we drop a dumpster off. They have somebody that works for the city, that helps monitor what's going into it, and we just kind of, all day long, go back and forth grabbing that and putting an empty bag for the day. This service that we do for the last five years, it's kind of averaging out about $15,000 per year.
How much?
15,000.
1.5?
And that's not every cost, there's a little bit of extra work at the landfill when they bring it up and stuff like that, but we're already staffed there, so that's a pretty low number, but around 15,000 per year, is what's funded for it. We had some suggestions, this takes a lot of our, it takes our personnel, it takes our equipment to be going out throughout the county doing that, where we've already got the staffing available at the land, at the Fort Hall Mine landfill here in Pocatello, to deal with it better. So I kind of had a couple options for that. We could leave the program as it is, with an average cost of around $15,000 per year that the county would help fund that service. Pros to that, you have a little less congestion at the, at the main landfill, at the Fort Hall one. And it's shorter travel for your public, your residents, because this is all residences, this is no businesses. Cons, it, it lowers our staff at the landfill, we're, you know, just trying to keep up as it is, and we have to send staff that direction, and it takes a truck and dumpsters and stuff to run that, where we wouldn't have to if they were coming to the landfill. Option B, we have, I would say, having free days only at the Fort Hall Mine landfill, the main landfill. We have, like I said, we have two of them per year. Pros to that is better utilization of our staff, better control of characterizing the waste, so we know that we're not getting hazardous waste, things like that, because them do cause problems when we're not manning, who's putting stuff in there, and your cost savings. Cons to that, you're going to have more congestion at, at the landfill, because you'll have more, now that they know they can't have it right at their home city, you're going to have more on each one of them days. One of them things that you could maybe do, which wouldn't be very costly, is add a third day. So even if you did it at the Fort Hall Mine landfill, you did three days instead of two. So you would still be saving quite a bit of money and, and have three days.
Can I ask you a question? What is the cost of option B?
It's, we're just normally running, so it would be the savings of $15,000.
So there's really no cost?
Yeah, we're already there, we have the equipment, staff to take that extra, we don't have to change any manpower, we don't have to change anything.
What's the furthest a resident would travel to get up there?
Downey, I don't know.
30 miles. And the other one, they travel 20 miles. So, it's a difference of 10 miles. One way.
So it's a, just a 10-mile change?
Yeah, to go to McCammon, to, then 20 miles, 19 miles. Nine miles make them to, one way, and eight miles the other way, so 17 miles.
Going once, twice?
And I'll tell you, I, I, I have concerns about even having free days. We're spending 2 million dollars a year trying to remediate the landfill right now. So I, I hate doing stuff in McCammon, because I don't know if we'll end up doing a remediation there sometime, and, and I think that we need to be. Pay attention to that.
And I have that next.
But I wouldn't mind adding another day, and doing three, free days, but one of those days would be midweek, not on the weekend. Then a lot of those people, older people, stuff like that, instead of fighting the traffic on a Saturday, they would have a day midweek, when they're off work or not working, or it'd just make it an easier day for some individuals that like to go to McCammon because it's smaller, to come to the Fort Hall Mine, that's.
One thing to think about a little bit, too, is, that's kind of what I was going to talk about, about the landfill, McCammon landfill location, but how it kind of started out is, we didn't have services, garbage collection services. So, I mean, what people had for their daily garbage, and we didn't have curbside anywhere in that southern area, so we started out with, we put dumpsters here and there in different locations, until it got so bad, because it was getting used oil and any kind of chemicals and whatever, and so that's where the McCammon landfill, these smaller little landfills popped up to try to do something about that. Right now, we have PSI under contract that does all of Bannock County residents out of city limits, and they do some of the cities. So they have services, curbside and dumpsters, medium dumpsters, large dumpsters, so there, there's more access to getting their garbage taken than there was in the past.
I would say the only concern about doing a midweek one is, we have pretty busy, commercial-wise, that's one nice thing about doing the free days on a less busy day like Saturday, is you're, you're still going to be competing with some of those bigger trucks, all, maybe in the middle of the week, but I don't know, if that impacts your decision at all.
I'd like to try it at least, the first time around, just to see what it does. Like I said, I know a lot of people that, that they wait for that free dump day, and especially down the south end of the county, because, and then they, it's convenient for them, and I think that if we did a midweek, I know there's a lot of commercial, but those trucks are in and out, where on a free dump day, we're clean down to the railroad tracks sometimes.
Is there a way you could open up a third lane on that free dump day to let the?
We try to, we've been kind of pinched lately with the expansion going on, but we usually do separate them from the other trucks.
You mean, scale?
Well, if it's a free dump day, it doesn't matter, so you can open up a third day, a third lane.
Still keep track of the tonnage that we take in for our.
Yeah, so we have to scale.
That's right, forgot about that.
There is one other thing, too, that might be with the mayors of the cities, is kind of like how Incom hauls their own. PSI, I've talked to them, and they would be glad to have a minimal charge, and they even said if the cities wanted to talk to them, they might even do it just as a, as some kind of, you know, pay thanks, a giving back thing, that they would drop a dumpster there and then pick it up, so that, if they wanted to kind of, they have that option, these cities, to kind of do the same thing with a pretty minimal, so that they could, the people could just have it close to their city, but.
How does, how would that compare to like the Clean Chubak, where Chubak pays for the dumpsters and stuff, or the Clean Pocatello, where they try to do some of that? Remember the programs that those guys are doing, and we made them pay for it, and they weren't too happy about that?
So them programs were, is, the cities were charging for their trucks' time, and, so they were still getting their service paid for, and then the county was taking it at the landfill for free.
So you're proposing something similar to that, potentially? Oh, you're talking, just PSI would haul it?
Well, yes, I'm, I'm saying the same, but on a free day.
Right.
So if the city wanted to help their residents out to get it shipped there, they could probably work a deal with PSI and say, hey, you know, but we'd still have to have the cooperation of the city to watch and manage what was going in there. I just talked to PSI on if they could help them out, that made it easier for some of the older people and whatnot, that they could drop some stuff off, and they said that they were really willing to, to get in on something like that.
And that would be something between the cities and PSI, not Bannock County.
Yeah, we would just still run our free day.
To me, I, like I said, I think if we went three days to them, one spring, one fall, and one.
Midsummer.
Midweek, somewhere in there. See what happens.
Yeah, I'm okay with that, and, and I'm. What do you want to do with McCammon? I know what I want to do, but I want to hear what you want to say.
That was a fun one, huh? Okay, so, like I said earlier, McCammon is one of many small landfills, C and D landfills and stuff, Millad, Oneida Counties, Franklin Counties, all these have these small, these small landfills. With regulation, they're going to larger ones, and that they're kind of trying to phase these, they.
But all those counties don't have a regular landfill like we do.
Yes, they don't.
They, I mean, it's.
So.
They haul to a regular landfill from those.
So they're trying to get them kind of obsolete and gone, with these big regional landfills. There's going to be a regional landfill, it's up by Soda, it's going to take all of Millads, Preston's, Sodas, Grace, and Wy, some of Wyoming, but they're doing a lot of that, because the cost involved to make it so you don't have all of these expenses for remediation and stuff, is lining, sales, all the approvals, all the testing and water sampling, that they, then smaller counties can't afford it, so that's why they're going to that, but. they, you, then smaller counties can't afford it, so that's why they're going to that, but... So with that, McCammon landfill, for the last five years, we've been, um, we've got a net loss of like thirty thousand dollars a year. Average. I mean, we could, we've raised the rates, but I, if, to raise the rate to take care of that, we'd be almost over doubling the rate, and I don't know if that would be something that the public would like either, I, I don't know.
And right now, we're open on Wednesdays and Saturdays?
Yes.
During the summer months?
So, three options there.
Okay.
Leave it the same, just to know that we're, you know, losing, or we have a loss of about thirty thousand dollars per year. Close it only to Saturday days, year round. You're talking, we're open from June to September for four months there, around sixteen days, sixteen Wednesdays that we're open. And on some of the earlier stuff that Aubrey put together, our Wednesdays are minimal, we don't have hardly any people. We have around fifteen hundred, two thousand on a Saturday, and then, um, what?
It was hardly anything for...
Twenty, two hundred...
Twenty-two was two hundred and fifty for all Wednesdays, and it was sixteen hundred and sixty-six for all Saturdays.
So that's all for the year, and sorry that the two thousand is for the year, so...
That makes more sense.
Yeah, sorry. So that, you know, we're down there for twenty-two hundred people per year.
And a lot of those are recycled, non-paying customers, stuff like that.
So, option A, leave it the same. Option B, close it only Saturdays year round, like I say, um, that would be minusing out them sixteen days and see if, if that helps the numbers that we're open, and there's a reason to even be down there. Or close completely. Pros and cons to closing completely. The environmental, environmental impacts is your main thing, like, you all understand we're spending two million dollars a year with impacts that we have from unlined land sale. That's an unlined sale down there. So, right now, we have nothing, but every time we put something in there, there's the next chance of what's gonna happen with aquifer and groundwater, and so, there is a big thing with that. Cost savings to the county, more staff and equipment, um, at our, um, main landfill. There's lots of, um, parts to this that we can add to, like no winter maintenance, but you've got a lot of winter maintenance, heating, lighting, road, roadwork, the road going up to, we, we need to look at paving, facility maintenance. There's, there's a lot of them structural and capital costs, too. The cons to closing it, um, is we're, we're protecting the environment, we're protecting the county's, um...
Every gully in the county.
Yeah. Cost, we, we gain the more staff, very well needed at the landfill here in, at Fort Hall. Um, you're gonna have South County residents, um, well, the cons, sorry, the loss of staff if we keep it open, sorry, is a loss of staff. We talked about the mileage, you're gonna have to have, um, residents would have to drive farther. But as I was saying, there is that option now that wasn't available before, just like Pocatello, they can call PSI, have a dumpster placed right at their residence.
Comment? Go ahead. Well, I'm all for closing it, and as one who grew up dumping in that dump, me saying that, I understand why, but to me, the risk is not worth the reward, and I would rather spend that money maybe looking at ways we can automate the landfill, get people in and out faster here, and be a bit, improve our service here as opposed to keeping McCammon open, so, that's where I would be.
What I'd really like to do is, is both these, I'd like to put on a Tuesday to make the final decision. Give us a little bit of time to think about it, look things over, uh, and then when it's on the agenda, if somebody wants to have a conversation about it, we can have that conversation. So, I, I agree with the ideas, but, uh, but I think that just for, this is a big step. I think that we need to make it so available, so people have the opportunity to talk about it a little bit.
Yeah, and I think compensating with that third day, free day, third free day kinda helps compensate for that a little bit, but...
I think, um, if we were, the commission was looking in a way of closing that down there, that I think some of our first steps would be communicating out to the public, um, working with Emma, running some surveys, and getting some, um, public comment.
Could we shut it down this year before it opens, before spring?
Well, we're still, we're still open on Saturdays.
We could potentially just shut it down for Wednesdays to kind of...
That'd be the discussion that we have?
There is one other thing...
When we make a decision to shut it down, when, where, and how?
There's one other thing to look at, um, talking with the EQ the other day, we were discussing this, and the landfill, like I said before, the landfill itself, so there's two kind of parts to that down there. There's a transfer station side and a landfill side. The landfill side, it's not going to take much, um, cost to, we're pretty much just putting a foot or so of soil over it, making sure there's drainage.
That's our reclamation guy.
That is our reclamation guy.
And seeding it. But, once you've closed one, they just kinda said, good luck on trying to ever get it open back up. So it's kind of a decision that, if you wanna close that landfill part of it, it's done. But as for the transfer station side of things, that you could reopen.
Where does the transfer station reside down there? Is it at the bottom?
So it's all in the one, one location, and as they pull in, we have a Z-wall that they put all the dumpsters at.
Okay.
And everything household, anything like that, there's a bare minimum that can go in the landfill.
Pretty accurate, okay.
So, two things.
Just something to...
We may take a little field trip, so everybody sees the picture and what's going on, and, and then let's put this on a Tuesday so we can make a decision on it.
Transfer stations are usually set up to where, if you get enough public or enough residents, far enough away, to where like, say if we have PSI, they can't handle it, they can't drive that far and get every resident. We're not talking with them, they've still got room, and so that's usually when a transfer station is needed, because then them trucks can run quicker to it, and then one big truck takes it in. But, we just, I mean, we're, we're growing as a county every year, but it's gonna be a few years till it would be cost effective to have a transfer station there.
Any other questions?
I'm for the field trip.
Okay. We'll, we'll get that on our schedule and run down there, use everybody's opinion, look at it. Go from there. All right?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, let's see. Emma?
Good afternoon, Emma Hyannicon, Public Information Officer, seeking, um, signature, I believe, uh, on the Affinity, uh, contract to run some advertisements for our household hazardous waste days. Uh, Affinity is the company that does those televisions that are posted inside Pocatello and Chubik restaurants that swipe through with any more advertisements. Uh, this has been run by legal, uh, and they've advised that we remove the warranties and indemnity clause, which is, I, um, you know, let Teresa Rodriguez, the woman that does the Affinity ads, I let her know and she's fine with that.
Questions?
This budgeting?
Mm-hmm. Yep, this is within the four thousand dollar budget for, um...
Oh, for their landfill, okay. I don't have any other questions.
Motion?
Ms. Chair, make a motion that we approve the contract with Affinity advertising.
If you have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Charity?
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Hello.
I am here seeking permission to release the RFS for the Cottonwood and Smith-Golch projects, with the exception of a small...
Please introduce yourself.
Oh, Charity Stags, Southeast Idaho Council of Governments.
Thank you.
Apologies. Um, there is just a small change, uh, we've been blessed with snow this year, unfortunately for these projects, we've been blessed with snow this year. So, they are, we don't think it's possible to get out there. I've talked to the landowners and the project manager, um, for the pre-estimate tour dates, they were scheduled for April. Uh, we're going to continue that with Cottonwood, just push it, we've got one at the beginning of April, one at the end of April, and then for Smith-Golch, we're moving them from April to late in May. Uh, that landowner said there's about sixteen feet of snow outside his house, out there, so, we're just shifting those over, uh, for weather concerns. Uh, but other than that, if, it, I have the commission's approval, um, to release that.
Questions? Motion?
No, it's got the clause that I was looking for in there, so I'm okay with that. Ms. Chair, make a motion that we approve the release of the RFS as presented.
If you have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
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 All right, the, the next item, um, if you're ready for it.
Yep.
The, seeking permission to proceed with, uh, the application process for a BLM grant, the Good Neighbor Authority, is a cooperative agreement between the county and BLM. Um, the advantage is that it will work for both federal and non-federal lands. Fields management and weed management are, um, activities that are allowable under this grant.
And this allows us to go on Forest Service or BLM ground and spray, or, or do management, is that correct?
Yes. Uh, the way the grant, as long as it benefits BLM land, so absolutely.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, that Good Neighbor Clause is a good thing.
It went through our grant committee with a recommendation to approve.
Okay. I have no further questions.
Motion?
Ms. Chair, make a motion that we accept the grant application or approve submitting the grant application for the Good Neighbor Weed, Weed Control.
If you have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, Ryan?
Thank you. Uh, Ryan Belmapp, HR Director. And, um, what we're bringing before you is a emergency action plan that, um, has had the contributions from many involved, uh, from our county safety committee, and if you don't mind, I'd like to take a second and just recognize them, so everybody in the safety committee, if you could like, raise your hand. So, everybody raise their hand there, it's had, had some support and help with this. Okay, so, um, a, as you're aware, one of the things that the safety committee does is we, we kinda go around the table once a month and talk about incidents, accidents, near misses, and we talk about concerns that might be going on in different departments related to risk and safety, and, and a theme that you've brought up and that we continue to talk about is, we need to train our employees and have them more prepared for a critical incident, such as like an earthquake, fire, shooter, all these, um, emergency, uh, critical incidents type situations. And, before we can start doing training and drills, we really need to have a plan in place, right? So, um, and so our committee, we, we have been working on creating a plan that, that would work for not, not just the courthouse complex, but for the entire county, um, well, for every employee of the county. And, uh, we've put this plan together, and, um, that's what's before you. So, um, I, I guess one, one other thing I'd like to say is when we submitted this plan to you a little over a week ago, I also went around talking to the other elected officials, and have, have seen some pretty good responses, you know, to, I don't think they, any of them really went over the details of the plan, but they liked the direction we're going, and, and from what they've seen, they've been supportive. And also, Carrie, um, has gone to the district courts, and I'd, and if you'd like to hear about their response to this, and, but they've been, yeah, thanks Carrie. If you don't mind, could we let Carrie just kinda talk about that for just a sec?
Thanks, Ryan. Carrie, Court Administrator, for the record. Uh, so, uh, the, the courts are real partners with the county in making sure we have both safe counties, safe court operations. So we reviewed, uh, the template that was put together with Captain Ballard, with the Sheriff's Department, and Sergeant Turner with Court Security, um, and Judge Carnarole is ADJ, just to get input on how we can support from a court perspective, the implementation of this. You'll see there's a notation in there that, uh, the administrative district judge would be asked to adopt through administrative order and Idaho Court Administrative Rule. This action plan is, is broadly applicable, and the suspension of court operations if we need to put any of these provisions in action to address the safety of our employees and the public of the courthouse. So we're very supportive and recognize this is also a, a growing and evolving, or, evolving document, and happy to continue work with the safety committee with Ryan and the commission on, on supporting the intent of the plan.
Thank you. Yeah, so with that said, do you have any questions or, or thoughts on this?
A few. But, but a lot of them are just things I'd like to sit down with you, uh, instead of going over in this meeting, uh, certain things on certain pages. Uh, and then John had some of the same concerns, I thought.
Just some minor drafting mistakes.
So it's just a little bit, uh, like I say, a couple of titles that are just mentioned, it just pops up someplace, and you don't hear about it till just one place, and just some of them, uh, my only caution, this is very good, but it's pretty wordy, you know, so, if we expect the employees to, to go through it, then we gotta, that's where the time comes in, that we gotta do the training, we got, it's, you can't, we can't make a document and put it on a shelf and expect people to know it. There's gotta be that follow-through, and that, that's the part that I, I think is vital to make it successful.
And I think, I'm glad to hear you say that, we've talked about the same thing in our committee, you know, we wanna make that happen, and, you know, and one of the things that we were thinking is, um, having like a companion to this, that would be like a, a handout for administrators, that would actually have the maps and the evacuation routes, and, and, you know, listing who's gonna be the building wardens and that kind of thing. We don't really want all that information in detail in this, but, uh, there'll be a companion document for...
This is wordy enough, you don't need to add more to it.
Right, right.
You know, I, I think some of the, the practices that Captain Ballard and the court martial are talking about is even having like little telephone cards that, that strip all this down and are color-coded, and so, moment of crisis, the, the essential elements that employee needs to know to, to be safe, and so, uh, you know, I, I think we're all on the same page of making it a maximally useful by minimizing the amount of information at the process.
Yeah. In the, in the event of a crisis, ninety-five percent of this will go out the door, and if you have that little card or something that you look at every day, or you've just had training on, that's what's gonna pop in your head.
Right. And, and I think there may be some, some small expenses that come up, like maybe orange vests or those little cards and stuff, as, as we proceed... vests or those little cards and stuff, as we proceed, haven't been budgeted as of now, but we can probably find, work with Christie to find, you know, small dollar amounts to cover that.
Okay. Okay. Any questions?
Did you have any other ask today, or just to update us?
Well, I, I, I wanted you to see this, how this is coming for you, each a general fill for, do we proceed, you know, do, love to talk to you about some edits, and, and as we start planning, you know, put a final draft together and then get some trainings, you know, going forward and drills going forward.
Besides some editing that may have to be done here, you feel like this is ready to be accepted?
Yes.
Okay. So, I think we do some, have some discussion, do whatever editing is needed, bring it back, and let's approve it.
Sounds good.
Okay.
So, maybe, maybe next week? That's, I'm kind of excited about this one.
Who's, who's the main person drafting? Is it you?
Kerry, Kerry's kind of took a lot of the ad, we've helped for it.
I think it's a team, I'm happy to help, I think right now, I think any of the Safety Committee, if we can help, we'll, we'll jump in and do it.
Well, I mean, I'm assuming just one person has the final draft that they're keeping track, is that you?
Yeah.
Okay, good, that's, that's all.
Okay, we'll have a conversation about that.
Perfect.
Then we'll move forward with it. Approve it in it. Okay? And thank you all for your work. I, I appreciate that we have a Safety Committee being organized, and it's vital to every organization that has multiple employees.
I'll have to ask Brian.
Okay. Kerry, you're, you're up, you're here.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just stay at the table if that's okay.
Oh, oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. On the agenda, I had two things for, under me, there was, and the second one should be pretty quick. If you don't mind, Josh, let us. So, it was regarding the 1095 C tax forms. So, we printed and distributed those to all the employees, but the county has a responsibility of sending a report to the IRS. Now, we were hoping this year that through our new system, Tyler Munis, we would be able to just do it through that system, or directly to the IRS. And so, we didn't really budget extra money for that. In previous years, we've used a vendor, and I forget the name of the vendor already, Complyrite, to submit that same report. Given the fact that we've been working, trying to get it through other means and haven't been successful, coming before you with the request to use Complyrite to submit that, and for the funding that it would take to submit that.
When's this report due?
The end of the month. Like, very soon.
Okay.
And Christie, were you going to say something?
How much was it again?
It was... Seven, ten.
Yeah.
In the past, we've paid for it out of our budget because we did the work. The IRS website put...
You're always to blame, so you get better too.
Just keep putting those contracts up there. This year, they did it. We were hoping like Ryan said, that we'd be able to do it through Tyler, we've had complications with the IRS website, and that hasn't worked out. I figured within county operations, because it's a county-wide function, that we could maybe throw it in operations, pay for it out of there.
How much is this again?
Seven hundred and ten dollars.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and we've had a...
If there wasn't the time crunch, and if we had more time to try and figure out the IRS side, it, it wouldn't be an ask, but those two factors are working against us.
Let's, let's meet our deadline.
I don't have any problem with that. And you guys are working toward trying to figure out a way to do it ourselves, at some point we'll get there, right?
We're still working on Tyler, there's a few bugs here and there, and...
Blame the IRS. You mentioned the IRS, just blame them. Everybody would be for that.
Yeah, and commend Josh for really taking this back. He's put in some real time into getting this prepared and doing it, and it's just been, honestly, no fault of his, it's just been frustrating.
Well, since it was Josh's birthday yesterday, I see no problem with authorizing to do this.
Thank you very much for the birthday present, I appreciate it.
Legal's opinion is March is the best one to have a birthday.
Motion?
Mr. Chair, make a motion that we authorize the completion of the report and the seven hundred and ten dollars, or whatever it was, estimated seven hundred and ten dollar payment.
You have a motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right.
We have a question for Brian on, on that, because...
Kerry, he'll just... Hello? Logan, Kerry Hong, trial court administrator. The agenda item I have for this afternoon is to offer to Bannock County on behalf of the Idaho Supreme Court, an ADA assessment of the Bannock County Courthouse, or any Bannock County facility that houses court operations. The Idaho Supreme Court has a contract with a retired deputy US Attorney who specialized in ADA prosecutions. His name is Bruce Adelson. Bruce has made a number of trips to counties throughout the state of Idaho to provide a privileged confidential report through the Idaho Supreme Court to counties, to try and identify any ADA priorities or ADA concerns that the county may, may wish to address. It comes at no cost to the county, it's a, completely through a consultation agreement that Bruce has with the Idaho Supreme Court. Several years ago, pre-COVID, we were in, having some conversations about doing one here while the consultant was in our judicial district. They have done reports for Franklin County, Bear Lake County, and Oneida County in our, in our district. I believe at one point I did share one of the sample reports with Dan, because I know Dan has a ton of training in, in ADA, just to see what he thought and if it would be helpful. It's completely optional, it's not a requirement, and, but if the county was interested, we would want to do an engagement with the, with the county to make sure it's protected, privileged information that comes to you. So, I'm here to make that offer, and if the county was interested, we would engage Bruce to probably come out here and do it this spring while he's on a circuit of Southeast Idaho.
We had him scheduled before.
We did.
We, I think twice.
Yeah.
Pre-COVID and stuff, so I think it's a good deal to...
My question is, what does that commit us to in the future? For example, if it turns up something that we don't know about, what's our liability to remedy that situation?
Yeah, it's, so it's, it's really not intended to be a, you're now on notice that you have, in terms of your ADA parking spaces aren't sufficient, distance apart, or the height between steps is, is not in compliance with ADA. It, it'd really be that conversation with, with Legal, that once you have a non-public work-privileged document that might indicate that how well you are, or how well we are or are not doing in terms of ADA in this building, Brian would have to advise you what, what legal or liability risks are there by having that information. My, Commissioner, my general perspective on it is, is knowing even if it's news that we don't like to hear, helps us try and correct it prior to, you know, any, any kind of litigation that might force us to correct it. But, as far as I know, none of these reports have been used nor were intended to force a county's hand to address anything in particular. I mean, the Bear Lake one, the Bear Lake one was coming on already, a visit from a deputy US Attorney who informed the Bear Lake Commission that they were out of compliance with the ADA, and we saw the kind of extraordinary actions by the legislature to help Bear Lake County get that project, and they couldn't get it bonded. But, I, I would, I'd refer you to talk to Brian and give probably a better consultation to you of what, if any, risks the county would have upon receiving the information.
And just to be clear, I'm not opposed to doing it, I just, I don't want to have a gun held over our head that says, hey, you know this now, you gotta fix it immediately when that may or may not be.
And that's the same way we do with our bathrooms. We knew, but the process and the monies, we had to wait till the time come to be able to do it. And, and with Dan being our ADA specialist anyway, we know, basically, and, and he always brings forward the projects that we need to take care of. I think we're, we're working as money and funds become available to try to correct them things anyway.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question? So Kerry, under this assessment we get here saying it'd be confidential and privileged, were they, how was it privileged? Like, how would it not be open to public inspection?
So, when, there's an engagement that's signed whenever Bruce comes and does one of these assessments. So, this is kind of the, the legal information that he puts in the report. So, the report is intended to be confidential, non-public, is produced for the Idaho Supreme Court pursuant to attorney-client privilege and work-product doctrine as defined by applicable law. And so, it's through that attorney-client, with the Supreme Court being the client, and the Supreme Court providing it to Bannock County, through that connection with court operations within the facility.
So, but Bannock County would not be the client, once they got that information?
Correct.
Because I'm just curious if someone did want to see that assessment, and it came to us as a public records request. I get that the Supreme Court would be the client of this former deputy...
Yeah, the US Attorney.
But, once they give it to us, Bannock County, the Commissioners, would not be the one.
So, my understanding is, is, and, and this is, this is why we're, we're having this discussion.
Right, I'm just curious when this comes in.
That there's a, so there's, there is some client engagement letter, that Bruce is doing it under attorney-client privilege, and the statement says between the, for the Idaho Supreme Court, but there's a separate engagement at the county level prior to doing it.
Then that would form that nexus.
So, it pulls, it pulls the county into that client status, in the same status that the Supreme Court as the consulting entity who's ultimately paying Bruce, enjoys that privilege.
Okay, that was my own concern.
That is how it is explained to me.
Because we're like, oh, great, this would be confidential, but then someone does a public record request, then we'd have to figure out. Now, if there is an attorney-client privilege with the Commissioners and this person, then it could fall under privilege. Thank you for clarifying that.
You're welcome, and we, for sure, Commissioner Huff and Brian, we can get you on the phone with Bruce, and you can kind of talk through the application of his report in, in context of those questions.
Would you need to talk to them, or are you satisfied that this is going to be privileged?
Well, I definitely want to see the, the language.
The engagement.
The engagement, yeah, before I can advise on it.
And all we're doing here is saying, we want to move forward, but we get the letter, and if we don't sign the letter, we don't move forward.
Right, and I was just clarifying that if we did get it, it would remain confidential, and that's why I wanted to figure out how, because usually if we get that, that'd be open to public inspection.
Okay, no, I think we ought to look at it anyway.
Yeah.
Move forward.
Yeah, I'm, I'm for moving forward to the stage where he looks at it and says, yes, it's privileged.
We don't have a signature.
There you go.
Excellent. That's the direction I need today, I'll, I'll let Supreme Court know to send the paperwork, and then I'll get a legal ticket going to Brian so you can take a look at it. Thank you much.
Thank you, thank you. Got a question. On the written agenda, we do not have Scott.
Right.
On the printed, or on the electronic agenda, we do.
Well, it's on the table of contents.
It's on the table of contents, but I did not see it on the agenda.
Okay. So, we can have a discussion, but we cannot make a decision.
Well, the, you, if the Commission wants to, you could amend the agenda right now to add it, to have a discussion, you just have to find good cause for that, but you wouldn't be able to make a decision.
But, we couldn't vote on anything today.
Correct. Because I understand that it is on the table of contents in the agenda, but it's not on the agenda.
Okay.
It's not listed as an action item.
It is on the table of contents.
It is on the table of contents, but not on the actual agenda, and...
The table of contents is not part of the agenda?
It, it, it is part, it is attached to the agenda, is part of it, but it's not, it wasn't an agendized item.
Okay.
If that makes...
Yes.
I have...
Come on up there.
Christie, to have important management assistance. I went ahead and took the liberty of scheduling an executive session for tomorrow at 2:30. If you decide to carry it over, I can always cancel it, but I did that within a 24-hour time period, so if you need to take action, you have that opportunity tomorrow.
An executive session can't happen within 24 hours, so that's, that's appropriate notice and agenda there. Looking at, I mean, this is, this is a close one, I mean, it is on the packet, in the table of contents at least, but when you click on the agenda, it's not there for a time, so notice could be an issue if people wanted to know when this was going to be discussed, and when to show them. So, it's up to the Commission.
So... But, if it's going to go to an executive session, does, does public attendance matter on that?
No, you know, the public attendance doesn't matter on the contract. If it goes to an executive session tomorrow, it gives the, or County Commissioners a chance to view the executives, the executive session, and then there's obviously a decision we made after.
So, on the electronic copy, whether it's out there, how does it state it?
It states, discuss amphitheater contract with possible executive session with potential action item following the executive session.
We just went over the open meeting laws.
Well, the only reason I bring it up is because on the agenda, it gives times, like we had a nine o'clock, you know, and this one, it doesn't state the time, so...
Yeah. And everything after 1:30 is, after 1:30. There's not a specific time on any of the things that we've just been going over, just that it happens after 1:30.
Right, and, and I'm just saying on the agenda, but the Commission had an open meeting today at nine, another meeting at 9:15, 11, and then you had all the 1:30 items. And it's mentioned in the table of contents, but it doesn't mention what time would fit in on the agenda for the day.
Just, just for legality, so we can hold that meeting, but what time tomorrow?
2:30.
2:30? You got schedules? I mean...
I'm okay.
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay. Sorry, we'll just, we'll just make it at 2:30 tomorrow, just cut and dry, we're talking about specific contracts and stuff, I want it as clean as possible. You're up.
Krista Pather, comptroller. Couple of quick issues. I had you sign the opioid settlement participation forms once already. When I submitted them, they kind of saved the wrong ones, could you do it again? If I could get those re-signed, that's just to participate in the opioid litigation lawsuit.
Mr. Chair, make a motion that we authorize re-signature on the correct forms for the opioid settlement funds.
We have a motion, all in favor say aye.
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 If I could take those, Braden's already received an email asking why we haven't signed them, even though they're not due till the 31st. So, I will take them, scan them, and send them to the notified party and that individual. The next item I have, Scott, the next item I have on the agenda is Scott and I have met, and some of the positions that he needs to fund, thank you, as part of the Bannock County events operations. We, he had put in the budget, an event manager, and then two support staff members. One of the support staff members he does not need this year, so he has, he and I have worked together on moving $51,543 to extra help, and that will cover EMT's security and any other event staff that would be part-time or temporary. And then there's also $9,000 that was left over in the event manager's position, because there was a delay in hiring, that we would also like to move those dollars into the extra help, just as a, a little bit of a cushion in case he needs all of those dollars. When we set this budget back in August, end of July, we weren't really sure what the needs were going to be, this will better portray what we think the needs are going to be, and then as the year goes and the budget process works, we will fine-tune it.
Some of the positions that we had initially put into the contract help line, like we talked about contracting security staff...
talked about contracting security staff, we talked about contracting some help for concessions, that kind of stuff. We felt like we could actually do that better by hiring temporary people. We have a pretty big pool of people that want to come work for us temporarily, and we ran into some serious issues. One came to trying to contract at a reasonable rate for some of those services. So this just allows us the flexibility, and I think we're going to be well within our resources to hire people temporarily. And the position that we had initially put in there was one that we were kind of debating anyway, and so we're not going to fill that position and just use temporary help to do that.
And this is all just moved in within eight. So we're taking it out of a full-time position and putting it into extra help. So we're going to save retirement monies because we won't be paying retirement on those individuals. We just wanted to be as transparent as possible by having this come before the board. If you approve it, then I'll get with Amy and have her do a formal resolution to move from this line to this line.
Are you thinking you'll use more security, hire more security staff than what you were originally thinking?
No. So initially, we had talked about contracting that stuff out, and we kind of, and as we met with different contracting groups, the bids that we started getting back were in the $35 an hour per person rate. You know, we've moved forward, and we've found a pretty decent pool of people for half that cost. It's just a much better value to the county. And so, you know, some of the concerns I had were kind of creating this pool, but there is the pool in the community and people have, you know, rejected the opportunity, so we feel pretty strong about it.
And we're trial in there. That's what we're doing this year, and glad that you're thinking out of the box and trying to figure out how to do it. That's the way I feel. Did I miss one?
No, I think you included an extra one.
Chair, Paul Tazinski. Are we okay to proceed with?
I'd ask for a motion. Well, proceed with it and then bring us back.
Resolution, never mind. Any questions?
Nope.
Comments?
That was a backup for what I just talked about. You gave me everything.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. You here for Braden?
Yeah.
Okay.
So in for Braden Clayson, Kristy Davenport. And we are presenting a formal acceptance, the forensic pathology technology grant from the National Network of Public Health Institutes. And I have been told that we would just like it if you would formally accept.
Okay.
What are the details on this?
This is a grant that allows us to buy computers, some other technology associated with the forensic pathology center. So this is, there's no match. It's just a straight, help us get set up.
And this went through you guys?
Well, mostly. The only concern I have on this is that the grant was awarded to the Eastern Idaho Forensic Pathology, and nowhere on the grant application does it say Bannock County. But we're going to see what happens.
Can we call them and have them change that to Bannock County?
Well, everything's kind of already done.
Right.
So at this point, we'll just see when they come back what, what happens.
How much is the grant for?
Fifteen thousand.
Every little bit helps, so in that aspect, it's a good thing.
Okay. Mr. Chair, make a motion that we formally sign, accept the National Network of Public Health Institutes grant as presented.
Make a motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Shanda.
Good afternoon, Commissioner. Shanda Crystal, Chief Department Officer. I have two items before the board today. The first one is requesting a signature on a contract with Contract West Roofing. They're the company that was awarded the bid to redo the detention center roof project. This contract has been through legal, five-star rating. It's ready for review and signature if you...
It's got a five-star rating from Brian, my goodness.
I get a little more silly in the afternoon.
Comments? Questions?
I think I'll start giving them. That'd be interesting.
Is this a contract that we can kind of use as a standardized contract going forward?
That was the intent that we built it for, and definitely in procurement, that's what we're going to use it for, as I worked with Commissioner Crowder on building the statements that we had in there. And then the intent is for legal, if, so the pole barn would potentially be my next project that I'll have a construction contract with. So as I go to build that, I'm going to use this as the framework, and then any items that I either take out or add are going to be redlined. And then as it goes to legal for review, they'll know that those are the ones that have been changed, suggested. It should go much smoother through legal, because they've already seen the bulk of those contract phrases prior to.
Great. This is our step in creating that list that we wanted, so good.
Are they going to give us a bond on this?
Right, so then that's what I sent you. So they've... Okay.
That's what I was just looking for, because I thought I'd asked and I...
You did. You did email me and ask. They have, and they submitted that bond. I submitted to legal for review just because I hadn't gotten one in a while, and Alan's response back was that you guys don't need to review all of them, but you are more than happy to if I submit them. But we do have one on file for the full 100% of the project, the 943, is what the bond came in back at.
Are you guys keeping those, or are we?
So that was the question, sorry, I did ask on there, was that I sent it for you if you needed it for your records, but my intent was just to keep it, and then if we needed it for a reason, if something happened that we needed, either they didn't perform... Oh, good. Or if they're not paying their subcontractors, right, then we would have it. But however the group wants to move forward, I'm more than happy to send them on, or obviously any cash would definitely go through your office.
We just need a consistent process, because I know in some of the road projects that we've done, subdivisions, planning and zoning, we'll bring those in, and we usually keep...
The paper bonds?
Yeah. For no good reason, other than they didn't want to keep them. But if we're going to have construction bonds, and I would be absolutely happy with if we have surety bonds, we could let your guys' office keep them. I just...
Well, they might as well be in your office if we're already doing that with other departments. The bonds ought to go to the same place.
For sure.
Not separated out.
Then we'll lock them up with the other revenue.
That's what I feel. Just easy to, you have this place to lock them up and take care of it already, so...
So in an effort to be consistent, too, so I did ask legal if I needed to request, because it's just an email copy, if I needed to request a physical hard final copy. And at the time, they said unless we felt like something was hinky with it, that, no, we didn't, but...
I'll just print this out and put it, because then that way, if they come in and talk to revenue, then they'll have a copy of it and a paper copy of it right there in my chance I'm not in the office or something comes up. But then you've got electronic copy. I have electronic copy and paper copy saved.
Okay. Perfect. But I will, because I did get that a couple of weeks ago, but I will just in the future write forward them right along and...
Okay.
Excellent.
Further comments?
I just want to acknowledge the work she had to put into this thing. This is going to really help us, I think, in our processes, especially with legal, not having to review every single clause of every single contract that comes along. So this is really great progress.
Yeah, thank you. Call for a motion?
Mr. Chair, make a motion that we accept and approve the independent contractor agreement as presented.
Have a motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 So the last item I have is a performance update for the board. I was super excited to hear that Charity got the grants approved today, but with us, a lot of projects this year, the winter has been rough, and moving back those pre-bids is going to push back the projects a little more, but still anticipating with what we anticipate that we can get about an acre a day done, that we're still confident we're going to meet the deadlines. But we just need Mother Nature to give us some sunshine. You are aware, right, that those have been pushed back into April, and then that final one into May. So in making a mandatory, we do hold two. So if just in case the contractor, for whatever reason, world crumbles on, you know, the first one, they do have a second opportunity, but they are, these ones are mandatory. We do feel it is extremely important that those contractors be out there and see the work that needs to be done. If there's got to be hand, you know, done work, that's going to cost us more money. If they can get equipment back into certain areas, that's going to be cheaper for us to allow. That is a decision that, as the group debated on, it's not often that we require a mandatory pre-bid, but in this case, we did feel it was critical in order to submit an appropriate bid to require those. But in having them have two options, that does just in case, right, they get a flat tire on the side of the road, right, or whatever, they do have one more chance to be able to come and meet with us then. So we're excited to get that project moving forward as soon as we get some sunshine going on. The cleaning chemicals for the detention center, that one is posted on Friday, and that pre-bid has been scheduled for next Wednesday to walk through and look at what the jail needs, what they already have, the equipment that they've got, what they want to replace, and how they want to move forward with that. So the next bit I have is for the forensic pathology center remodel. That pre-qualification meeting was today. We did have four design firms in attendance today, so that was wonderful to have them review the project that we had and ask their questions. Their official questions are due on Tuesday, next Tuesday, back to the group, and with our responses back on Friday, so that project is moving quite along as well. The next one I wanted to review was the detention center roof. Now that that contract is signed, I can get a notice to proceed out, and the company will move forward with ordering supplies and getting a scheduled time for the detention center when they can start that project. The next is the upgrade of CPod intercom system. That project had been approved the tail end of the calendar year last year to move forward, and we've had some difficulty getting all the people in the same room to talk. We have two kind of ends of that, and one is the equipment side, and the other is the electrical software side to talk to the equipment that we've already got. Levi has put some pressure on them, and we now have, are working together to get a date set for that. The equipment has been ordered, but getting that meeting put together to get everybody in the same room is going to be great for that project to make it a seamless transition from one to the next. In the landfill, the cell four, phase two, again, we are anxiously waiting the startup of that project. They are closely watching the snowpack as it melts and waiting for the temperature to be right to be able to move forward to finish that project. They anticipate it being completed May, late May, early June, somewhere in there, but again, a lot depends on what the weather does in the next couple of weeks.
And how much mud there is.
Yes, and yes. But if we keep crossing our fingers and tilting our heads slightly, it's going to be fine. But they're hoping, right? They're hoping the end of May, early June, to have that project complete and lined and finished. The last one is the HVAC at the booking department and the DPOD out at the detention center. And again, we've had a few weather delays with that one, but the coils have been installed, and they are scheduling a crane to then move those units to the top of the roof and to finish out that project here shortly. And that is all of my updates, unless the board has questions or...
I just want to give you another gold-starring with John. I had the opportunity to attend the bid meeting today, and I was pleased with the professionalism that you ran that and the way you represented the county on that, so thank you for that. Good job.
Thank you. We've got some great teams pulled together, and we're doing wonderful things for the county, so I appreciate that.
Got a lot of projects out there. Well, thank you. With that being said...
She just read that one.
Oh, okay. Did I miss something?